Before I recognize the student, I, and I'll just ask the lady that's accompanying the students to choose whether she stands in place or comes down with them. But it's Ms. Angel Wilson. She's Health Educator Consultant, SWAT Coordinator, Tobacco Prevention and Control Program, Health Education and Promotion within the State of Florida Department of Health. Ms. Wilson, would you please stand? Okay, thank you. And I'd like to call Mr. Thomas Bacon, Junior of Pine Forest High School, and member of the Students Working Against Tobacco, to make presentation to City Council on the harmful effects of tobacco use. Mr. Bacon, would you join us down here, please?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hayward and Pet School City Council members. I come to you today as a member of the Escambia County Students Working Against Tobacco Group to ask you to adopt a resolution. I'm sorry, but we have some facsimile forms with information. Sorry, I didn't mean to start so early.
If you give them to the clerk, please. Yes, ma'am.
Shall I continue?
Sure.
I come to you today as a member of the Students Working Against Tobacco Group to ask you to adopt a resolution urging retailers to stop selling candy flavored tobacco in the Escambia County and Pet School. Ninety percent of smokers begin using tobacco before the age of nineteen. In fact, and I quote, "Today's teenager is tomorrow's potential regular customer." And the overwhelming majority of smokers first begin to smoke while they're still in their teens. The smoking patterns of teenagers are particularly important to Philip Morris. This quote from Philip Morris displays how tobacco companies feel about encouraging the use of this deadly product. Tobacco attracts 4,000 youths every day in the U.S. and each year kills over five million people worldwide. The newest tobacco company tactic comes in the form of candy flavored tobacco. Tobacco companies are targeting youth by having their products look and taste like candy. Tobacco orbs look like Tic Tacs, snus looks like small tea bags, and strips look like Listerine strips. Flavors such as grape tray, watermelon, cotton candy, icy mint, and peach are added to the product to mask the harsh taste found in cigars, cigarillos, spit tobacco, and chew, and dissolvable products. Candy flavored tobacco targets new users, of which the majority are youth. Studies show that seventeen-year-old smokers are three times more likely to use flavored tobacco products than smokers who are over the age of twenty-five. Youth tobacco is a problem in our county and country. According to the data from 2010 Florida Youth Tobacco Survey, nine point seven percent of Escambia County middle school youth reported using one or more tobacco products in thirty days. This is above average compared to the state rate of eight point seven percent. Even more shocking, the twenty-four point six percent of Escambia County high school youth have admitted that they have used tobacco in the past thirty days, which is above the state average of twenty-two point two percent. In a small random sample of Escambia County youth in 2010, the FYTS found eight hundred and seventy-one middle school students were tobacco users and 2,881 high school users were there. That is 3,752 youth tobacco users in just a small sample of Escambia County. The tobacco industry advertises to youth at an early age. We are conditioned to view candy as something that is a treat for youth. In psychology, we call this the token economy because our peers, teachers, and parents and coaches award us with candy for our good behavior and deeds. The tobacco candy is like saying that it's okay for our youth, including myself, my peers, to use it. There's nothing safe about these products. They use flavoring and coloring to entice us. They hook us into a trap of addiction. These candy flavored products are like any other tobacco products. They addict, manipulate, destroy, and kill young people like myself. Today, we are asking you to take a stand and help save the lives of thousands of youth by adopting a candy flavored tobacco resolution urging retailers not to sell candy flavored tobacco in the city of Pensacola. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Don't leave yet because you may have some comments or questions from City Council. I would just like to invite you back. I don't see any problem with us adopting a resolution like this. It may be a couple of meetings away from now.
Yes, sir.
But would you be willing to come back down here if and when that happens?
Absolutely sure, if I have no prior engagements.
Okay. And I try not to interfere with prom or graduation or anything like that. Okay, well, great. And we could even put it off, you know, work around your schedule. But have you and your group and Ms. Davis come back. Do have a couple of people that wanted to speak. Ms. DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I wanted to thank you and your group for coming down and also putting together this packet for us. A great deal of information is in here, and I know it took a long time to get this together.
Yes, ma'am.
And a lot of times, our being able to take action takes us being able to find this information. And I do see that the Board of County Commissioners passed a resolution in 2011. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. So Escambia County.
And then you've given us some wording as well, so it should be pretty easy to follow up. And this is quite disturbing to know that this is being sold to kids in our community. I mean, there's another issue out there with something called spice or bath salts, and that's now become a felony in the state of Florida. So, you know, I don't know what regulation the state will be doing, but I look forward to hearing more information from our staff and seeing it again. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes, thank you for this awareness campaign that you provided. I suggest that you also contact our local American Heart Association. They have been active in sending representatives to Tallahassee, particularly to address this issue. So, I think you would be armed with additional support with information as well as copies of letters that they have already written regarding this on a state legislative level.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Definitely get the information.
They'll be thrilled to have you as a soldier.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt. May I go back and make a motion? I've been asked by the Administrator that that would be a better way of handling this since we're interested in doing that. So, I'll actually make a motion in support of this. So, I'd like to make a motion that the City Council requests that staff craft a resolution for, should I read this into the record, urging tobacco retailers to stop the sale and marketing in the city of Pensacola of candy flavored tobacco products not covered by the FDA. Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second, and we can get to the other comments of people later. I would just like to have us go ahead and vote on this. And that passes humanely. So, we'll be in touch with you on that. Ms. Myers.
I just wanted to thank you for coming down here and bringing this to our attention. It's a subject that I feel very strongly about, and I'm not prejudiced. I used to be a smoker, and I know how pleasurable smoking is and how addictive it is. And I just am very proud of you for caring enough about other people to share the knowledge and information you have concerning these very dangerous, this very dangerous product. And actually, when I was growing up, we had little candy cigarettes. You could, I mean, they weren't real cigarettes. They were candy that looked like cigarettes. And, you know, I was six, seven years old. We thought it was really cool to, you know, eat candy-shaped cigarettes. So, I'm very proud of you for spreading the message and doing the hard work to get it out. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. And briefly, young man, I'd like to thank you for coming down to come before us with this issue. And as a former educator and a former respiratory therapist, it would be important to include the American Lung Association in your research if you have not already done so. I've treated thousands of individuals with pulmonary lung diseases over a thirty-two-year period. So, I know a lot about life support and the injuries that cigarette smoking, and particularly if it's introduced to children at an early age, it has the potential for a long-term problem once they're convinced that that's something that they think that it's cool to do. But, you know, thanks again, and I always get excited when I see students come before us that are still in high school and beginning to develop an understanding of what it means to move forward as a leader and to have an opinion that you're willing to share, express, and to support. So, thanks for being here.
Okay, thanks, sir. Bye, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And would you like to have your other group stand up and be recognized?
Yes, sir.
You can call them out by name if you wish.
I'm just gonna say that Terul Ben-Halp, with the Escambia County SWAT Coordinator, she's been instrumental in all the work that we've done. She's come out to the local high schools, not just my high school, but all the high schools in Escambia County, and just trying to get as much support for the cause as possible. We've got people from multiple schools in Pine Forest and other schools, but just without them, it wouldn't be possible to do it. And I'd like to thank them personally.
Okay, well, thank you. And Ms. Wilson, I hope you and your group will be able to come back down when we have this on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Well, I've got things out of order here. Off to a good start. I was supposed to be doing the open forum first, but we're gonna get to that. We're still gonna give you your open forum. But since I'm already on this tack, I want to just go ahead and finish with the presentations. Is that okay with you? Okay, good. I thought so. All right. All right. Recognition of Adrian Stills, Director of Golf Operations. And normally, we let the executive department read this. I'd like to have Ms. Stills come on down, but I feel like this is something I wanted to read this time. Mr. Stills has been inducted into the Black Professional Golfers Hall of Fame. Is that right, sir?
Yes, sir. I was.
Okay. Let me just give some highlights of Mr. Stills' life. His father introduced him to golf at a young age as a way of staying out of trouble, but also as a bonding avenue with his sons. He's a two-time All-American at South Carolina State University. He's won three North Florida PGA section championships, won twenty Florida mini-tour events, competed in two U.S. Open championships, played in the PGA Tour in eighty-six and eighty-seven, inducted into the Mid Eastern Atlantic Conference Hall of Fame in 1993, taught at Grand Cypress Academy of Golf in Orlando for fifteen years. He moved to Pensacola to help organize the first tee of Northwest Florida, an advocacy organization committed to promoting character development and life-enhancing values of children through the game of golf. Until 2010, Stills was the last black golfer in twenty-five years to qualify for the PGA Tour through the PGA Tour Qualifying Tournament. He's a member of a group of black business professionals who founded a mini-tour where the top performing player each year receives a paid entry and other expense fees into the PGA qualifying tournament. He's the Director of Golf Operations and Head Pro at the city-owned Osceola Golf Course. On March tenth, twenty-two, he was inducted into the National Black Golf Hall of Fame in Tampa. And Mr. Stills, if you would come up here, I have something, and I'd like to present to you on behalf of the city.
This is from the sports page on that date, and we wanted you to have us on behalf of Mayor Hayward and the City Council and all the employees. We have our thanks and congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Council, City of Pensacola. It's a great honor to be a member of the National Black Golfers Hall of Fame, and it's an honor to be back in the community I grew up on, I grew up in, and being a part of Osceola Golf Course. So, this is a great honor, and I thank you very much.
Don't leave yet. Mr. Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. While you're reading all the attributes of Adrian, Mr. Stills, he failed to mention that he beat me out of ten dollars. It caused me some real pain because at the time, I didn't know he could play that good. So, I think that was the triggering point for him to go on to excel when he beat me. Thank you so very much.
It was a great honor, Council. Thank you.
I think everybody would love to shake your hand. Okay? Congratulations.
Yes.
Okay.
Black, Mr. President?
I do not.
Okay. But what we will do is ask two individuals to come up here and, may I?
Yes.
All right. For those of you that have attended previous council meetings and fellow council members, you recall that we had two volunteers from the Pensacola running community, Pat Cosmos and John Clark. It's nice to see the plaque, who initiated a process that involved months of hard work that would hopefully result, and tonight, I'm pleased to say, that their efforts were not fruitless. And their goal was to provide Pensacola a designation as one of our countries, one of America's runner-friendly communities, a designation that is awarded by the Road Runners Club of America. And I want to remind everyone that running is becoming increasingly popular. It's one of the most affordable sports that we have and serves as the, really, the base of many of our other community-supported sports activities, such as soccer, football, baseball, et cetera. It all involves running. So, tonight, we are fortunate to have the official announcement that Pensacola is now a runner-friendly community. And I'd like to recognize Pat Cosmos and John Clark. If you'd please step up here, and you can speak as well to share with others what was involved to get this designation. All right.
It was a very long process. There are several facets that were involved with this. It's not just an individual. It's a business support, community businesses that promote or encourage the running community that will hold functions for the runners. Facilities like Maguire's or Seville Quarter Captain Funds that will hold weekly runs for the area runners and also provide large events. The St. Patrick's Day Run for Maguire's that brought in record numbers this year, and Seville Quarter that does their yearly Turkey Trot. Other businesses that encourage or support runners, Bagel Heads, Starbucks, places like that. We have a, actually, a top fifty runner business in Pensacola with Running Wild. They won that distinction last year. That's out of the United States. So, this is here in Pensacola that we have this community, or we have this business. We have other businesses that are supporting not only running, but the triathlon community with multi-sport fitness. We also have, with great support, the city that works with the running community, that has members that work specifically with us, helping us with routes, with dates, with security. The Pensacola Police Department that will man the heavily traveled intersections. And I've run all over the United States, and I can tell you, I've run in some areas where there's no police protection out there. We support you guys. We thank you for being out there. And, you know, Mayor Hayward wrote a proclamation for us that will have posted as well. And, you know, through the efforts of the city, and I would like to mention, and I'm off track, obviously, but I would like to thank some members, obviously, Councilman Brian Spencer, who was instrumental in pointing us in the right direction who to contact, Ms. DeWes, who listened to me at church, and I cornered her at our children's running events and Field Day, and also city staff who were very, very instrumental. Ms. Kim Kaminsky with the Special Events Coordinator, Jeff Pullman, and David Flaherty with Parks and Recreation. Without their help, this wasn't, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be possible. So, it was a community project. It wasn't just the Pensacola Runners Association. So, I guess I'll stop at that point. So, you know, what I have to say in closing, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to say that our fellow PRA board members, we are a passionate group. We live in Pensacola. We raise our families here, and we love to play here. We are here to assist the city in promoting Pensacola in any way possible. We're here to help, so please call on us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. And, Mr. President, I had the plaque issue a little bit confused. Actually, the plaque is being presented from them to the city of Pensacola, and I will allow you to receive that. No, sir. I would wish you would, as our designated runner there, so.
And I'll say something real quick if I can.
Yes.
Well, first, we'd like to present this to you guys because, you know, Pat came to the board with this idea, and our take on it was run with it, which he did flawlessly, but we couldn't have done this at all without the city's help. And the city has always been extremely helpful with all of our events that we do here, and I, you know, can't thank you enough for that. So, we want to actually present you guys with this plaque. In addition, we've made some additional enhancements with our relationship with Pensacola Sports Association, and there will also be a plaque just like this, as well as a proclamation letter, on display in their offices at all times. So, hopefully, this is a good step in what I've been wearing out, Council. And Spencer about for, before his run for office, that we need to make this a pedestrian-friendly city, and this, I think, is a great step towards doing that by bringing awareness to it. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. DeWes wanted to make some remarks.
Yes, thank you. Just very quickly, I wanted to share a story that your hard work has already began to pay off. I know that your passion as runners and wanting to make sure that the rest of the country or even the whole world knows about us. And I have a family member that is an Ironman athlete, and before he came to visit a couple weeks ago, I mentioned that we have this designation now, mentioned all of your hard work. And when he left, I said, "Did it feel different?" And he said, "Yes." I think simply by knowing that there are runners in the community and that the community is committed to it, it feels like a better place to be and train and be part of whatever else is going on in the community. So, I'm proud of your efforts, and this is something that shows how we can change our community by a small group of passionate people getting this designation and then being able to share that with others. So, I congratulate you.
Pat, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Fies, ten K. Don't come out.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Johnson, you had some remarks you wanted to make about the recent event out at Roger Scott.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We had the Pensacola Open, the wheelchair open, had a hundred and, hundred-plus players out there representing many countries from all over the world. Had the top, many of the top wheelchair players in the world here that participated in the event. It was a tremendous success. This council, I want to thank them and the mayor and the mayor's staff for their support of this event. It was, again, a tremendous success, and without everyone's cooperation, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be. The person I'd like to also single out would be Mr. David Mayo. Mr. Mayo is the head of this event and does a great job every year. It showcases Pensacola and how friendly of a community we are, and I think it reaches others out all over the world. So, I want to thank everyone for their support and cooperation. Mr. Flaherty and Mr. Bruce Catan also, so thank you. It was a tremendous success. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, perhaps I can get us back on track. My apologies. We're gonna move into the open forum section. Mr. Alistair McKenzie is first up.
How are you doing this evening? My name's Alistair McKenzie. I'm here to talk about chickens, actually. I don't know if you saw the story this week, but there's an organic farmer that lives over in East Hill that has had a code enforcement violation put against him because he's had chickens in his backyards that don't comply with the ordinance. I went and looked these ordinances up. They're four dash two dash two to four dash two dash five. They were passed in nineteen sixty-eight. Who knows if they've ever been enforced before? The reason I want to talk to you about is to kind of get it on you guys' radar and hopefully, you know, seek some, I guess, at the least, alterations or edits to this ordinance. I, myself, am a backyard gardener and plan to have chickens in my backyard as well. I don't think I need to go into like the whole organic revolution and everything else that's going on. Part of that is a lot of people are getting involved these days with growing their own food and raising their own, you know, you know, small livestock in their backyards, like chickens and bees and making honey and things like that. Apparently, you know, it's really healthy. It's really good for you. You can know the source of your food and where it comes from. Even today, there was an article in the New York Times about how bad, like farm factory eggs are, you know, and how nutritionally valueless they are compared to the, you know, eggs that come from your backyard. The way the law sits right now is that it requires the chickens or any fowl of any kind to be in an enclosure fifty feet away from any structure. In the city of Pensacola, that's pretty much impossible, you know? So, I really think that, you know, there, this gentleman I know is, I don't know him personally, but I know about at least a dozen people, at least in the East Hill area, that have chickens in their backyard, and, you know, they're not causing any problems, they're not causing any health concerns. And so, I really wish that council would revisit it because I think, you know, it's really a healthy thing for people to have their own fresh eggs, and they're also pets too as well. So, you know, if you would start taking a look at that, you know, and maybe make some alterations or edits to it, you know, given the nature of the changing times and people wanting to raise their own food, I think it'd be a good thing. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Stay there, please. Ms. Myers.
Could you give me the site of the ordinance again?
There's four dash two dash two.
Wait just a minute. Don't talk too fast now. I'm a southerner, and I (laugh) talk my language. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. It's four dash two dash two to four dash two dash five.
Okay. I do want to revisit that ordinance because factory farming is extremely cruel. So, when I buy eggs, I buy free-roaming hen eggs. Not that the eggs are free-roaming, but the hens are. Just want to clarify that. But, you know, I would like to make it easier for people to be able to have chickens, and like you said, they also make good pets. I've had chickens for pets. So, I'm going to look at this, and I would love to talk to you some more about it, so maybe we can communicate again about this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Myers. Mr. Clifford Stokes. And my apologies to making you have to wait through the presentations.
My problem. I'm here anyway. Clifford Stokes, seven four eighty, Roland Hill Road. I live in the county, but I own property in the city. I have two issues that I like to talk about. First issue is contracting. It appears to me, looking at some of these contracts, that we give contracts to the same people over and over again. Somehow, we need a rotation or somehow spread this out for more people who are qualified can get on some of these contracts. It just doesn't seem fair that if you get to know somebody, you get the contract. contracts. It just doesn't seem fair that if you get to know somebody, you get the contract over and over again. So the city needs to look at somehow spreading these contracts among competitors to make it fair and balanced. It's not who you know, it's can you do the job properly. My second concern breaks into two groups. It is all on the diversity. I look at the city now, and I don't see any diversity in our top managers. I see one top manager who is a black female, and I see a few more black females. I don't see any male blacks, and I don't see any blacks help running this city. Twenty percent of the city are minorities, but we don't run this city. We don't make decisions in this city. It needs to be some changes, you know? We need to have diversity in city management. We need people of color. This city is very diverse. We're getting other minorities in. We have other minorities in. We need diversity in running our city. We need different points of view in running our city. So that needs to change. I was present at one of the meetings where we had the Chamber of Commerce in. I didn't see any blacks in that group. I know we can't tell the Chamber of Commerce to hire, but we give them our money. They take our money. So somehow, we need to influence the Chamber of Commerce in hiring blacks so we can get some perspectives from our black community, from our Hispanic community. We need perspective from other people to help draw the people in here. And I look at the head of the Chamber of Commerce who tells people to come here and live and work and bring jobs here, but he doesn't even live in Pensacola or Examiya County. How can you tell me to come here when you don't even want to live here? We need to look at these areas and come together and make some changes. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stokes, Mr. Townsend either has remarks or a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you so much for bringing these issues forward. These are some critical things that you brought forth, and I would hope that all who heard it will take heed, and hopefully, we can do something about it. Specifically, in the contract area, we really need to ensure that all of the contracts are being awarded on a competitive basis and ensure that folks get a piece of the pie. On the diversity issues, that's been an issue that some of us have been talking about constantly since we've been on the council, and we don't seem to be making any strides on that of any significant degree. It's strange that, well, not strange, because it was obvious that what went down at the committee of the whole meeting regarding the shameless presentation, and we looked at it, and I had heard comments that the makeup and the composition of that group that came in talking about the things that they were doing. And it was a void there. And I have some strong concern about it. I did not say anything at the time, but that is an issue that should be dealt with inasmuch as you stated correctly about the money, it's your money that going, that we paying for their effort. So we shall ensure that some of, all the folks get a piece of that as salary, et cetera. You can look at the welcome group. If you go to ribbon-cutting groups of the chamber, you do not see any significant change identical to what we saw Monday. So I really appreciate what you brought forth. Thanks so much.
Okay, Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Stokes, I want to personally thank you for being with us this evening. And I would address both of your concerns. The first one deals with repeatedly awarding contracts and so forth to individuals who have been getting them since the beginning of time. As a matter of fact, on the pre-disparity study that MGT performed, one of the recommendations that they forwarded back to the City of Pensacola was to begin a process of bid rotation, rotating those individuals on the list that have been there for life to rotate it and give others, who, as you indicated, are qualified to do certain things, an opportunity to demonstrate their skills and expertise. And that was completely ignored as a recommendation from MGT. And I hope that with the full disparity study, that such recommendations will be addressed and at least put into place. The second interest, idea, I mean, comment that you had involves diversity of staffing, not just here at the City of Pensacola, but basically throughout the City of Pensacola. And I'm one of those people who did observe what happened on Monday at the Committee of the Whole, and I made my remarks. I let it be known how I felt about it because I believe we were all looking at the same thing. And it appears to me that diversity and inclusion are a couple of terms that we like to use when it's convenient to talk about those kinds of things, I guess as a soothing technique. But as you have indicated, the City of Pensacola has a long way to go. What I strongly encourage and will continue to encourage, that our citizens, like yourself, take the time to come down here and see what you saw on Monday. It's difficult to make a decision if you don't know what's really going on, and it's dependent on our folks to get together, to take a personal interest in where their tax dollars are going and what they are being used for, and to pay more attention, and really to make demands. I mean, we're at the point now where I'm tired of talking about it, really. I've been talking about it for 65 years, at least, and I've been seeing the same old repeated behavior. And I'm tired of talking about it. I'm sick of talking about it. We can talk about it in certain other groups, but it's time for the people to step up and demand what, a fair share of what they're putting into the pot. And once again, thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you, sir. Okay, I have no other cards before me, so I move to approval of the minutes. They've been sent out to you ahead of time. Hope you had a chance to review them. Are there any additions, modifications?
Who's the approval?
Second.
Your motion and a second. Please vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Pay attention. Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Madam Clark, item number six.
Item number six is a request to consider, request for zoning and future land use map amendment, 4751, 4761, and 4771, North Ninth Avenue and 126 Springdale Circle.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Don Kelly is here to address this.
Thank you. Members of council, good evening. It's a rezoning request for both the zoning map and also the future land use map to amend four parcels of property located on Ninth Avenue. One parcel is located 126 Springdale. That parcel on Springdale is also owned by the same property owner on Ninth Avenue, right in front of it, and will most likely be developed as one single parcel because of its size. The request is precipitated by the purchaser of the property to the extreme south, 4751 North Ninth Avenue. He purchased it from out of town with the intention of putting a beauty salon on that property, wanting to find out the R2 office zoning did not allow for beauty parlors. And he brought this forward, coordinated with the property owners to his immediate north at 5761, excuse me, 4761 to 4771 North Ninth Avenue, to create RNC for all four of those parcels, because immediately to the north, it's C1 zoning, which is a more intensive commercial, and what's left to the south would be the R2 office. So what you do is you kind of graduate the intensity of use down Ninth Avenue, connecting C1, RNC, and then back to the office use, instead of having just one isolated parcel, RNC, amongst what still would be office uses. So he brought this request forward. It was heard by the planning board back in January, and that did approve, bringing it before council.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Ms. Dewise?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a quick question about the buffering in this area because of all the neighborhoods that come right up to almost to Ninth Avenue. And I thought I noted a pretty good green belt between with some trees and some pretty good growth. Is that expected to stay? Is that something that's part of the zoning with this to create a buffer if something is already in place, that we ask that that stay there instead of a privacy fence going up and it looking like a fort if we have some natural space?
Mr. Kelly.
Particularly for the two properties there on the northwest corner of Ninth Avenue to include the Springfield property, that is currently vacant property, and that would have to go through the complete development review to include the 20-foot buffering requirement to the adjacent residential property. Existing two businesses, one on the southwest corner is an insurance office and is anticipated to stay that way, and the other will be a beauty shop, which was previously an office, and that there is some buffering there.
Okay, because I think the one on the north is what I saw that had quite a bit of trees.
Vacant. It would be subject to everything in our land development code as far as development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Anybody else on council? I don't have any, show anybody from the public question to speak on this. If you do, though, rise and come down to the podium, though, but I'll need you to fill out a blue card before you do. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. There's no quasi-judicial hearings. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a presentation that we failed to give at the Committee of the Whole on specifically referring to Bayfront Parkway, item number H, and I'd like the opportunity to have that presented at this point.
Sure.
And I'll have Mr. Algarz to come down and make the introductions.
Good evening, President. All members of council. Mr. Reynolds, we're here to give you a brief overview of the project that you approved last Monday regarding the bayfront landscaping from Alkene Street to Seventeenth Avenue. Mr. Bruce Brodsky is here from Atkins Consulting to give you the highlights of that project.
Council members, good evening. The Bayfront Parkway landscape enhancement, as you know, is an FDOT joint participation agreement project, a JPA project, and as such, it has undergone extensive review by the DOT of the landscape plans, and therefore, the design does meet all FDOT safety and setback requirements. There's a $250,000 grant from the DOT, and that is for landscape and irrigation materials, installation, and maintenance. It does not include any administration of the project. The project extends from Alkene Street on the west to Seventeenth Avenue on the east. It includes all of the medians along the way, as well as that rather large triangular-shaped area at the corner of Seventeenth Avenue and Bayfront Parkway. As you look at this slide, you'll see the red dot in the center of the slide, which is immediately adjacent to Admiral Mason Park, and that dot is where the existing median opening is going to be closed. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a minute. The plant palette for the project consists of all native plants that are adapted to exposed coastal conditions, which is mainly salt spray and wind, although it also includes sandy soils that are of low nutrient value. The sand live oaks are going to be planted in clusters with saw palmetto beneath them, and that is the way that you would typically see those growing in nature in this type of environment. The clustering of the trees, when the trees are clustered, they actually wind up protecting each other from the elements. So when you do get inevitable natural pruning from some storms, it's not as noticeable because it's still a nice cluster, as opposed to if you have the trees planted typically like you see 50, 60 feet apart, and you get some damage to one of them, it's got nothing protecting it, and it's just a exposed damaged tree. I actually think that once the oak trees mature, once the saw palmetto matures, and all the other plants that we're using fill in, that it may actually look like, one day, that the oak trees were there first, and that the Parkway, because of the way it curves, was actually designed around those trees to protect those trees. That would be a nice effect, and hopefully, that's what it will look like. Some of the other plants that we're using, dwarf yopon holly is a great native plant. When you leave it alone, it grows into these mounds that are about two to three feet tall, these thick mounds of the plant, and it's a very nice, natural look, needs no care. There is a tendency, for some reason, for people to want to prune dwarf yopon holly into what I call these cannonball shapes, and we definitely don't want that. We just want to leave it alone and let it look as natural as possible. Gulf muli grass, this is going to be the star of the show when it comes fall time, because in the fall, for about four to six weeks, the plants get covered with pink flowers. And the way we're using the Gulf muli grass is in these large masses. And I think when people are driving down Bayfront Parkway with the muli grass in its full glory, that's something that's going to be very impressive, something that people are going to remember and look forward to seeing year after year. Kunti. Kunti is an ancient plant. It's been around for millions of years, which tells us right away that it's a survivor and it will do well in this difficult environment. It has a very interesting texture. It has a very interesting form. It looks like a fern, as you can see, but it's not actually a fern, and it will add nice interest to our overall palette. And finally, the last plant that we're using is shore juniper of the blue Pacifica variety, and I must confess that shore juniper is not a native, however, not a native to this area. However, it does look like a native. It does act like a native, and it's a very good plant for where we want to use it, which is on the noses of the median openings or just back from the medians, because it only grows to about a foot tall. So there will never be an issue with visibility for cars making turns. This slide shows the location of the current median opening that will be closed. It's immediately across from Admiral Mason Park, as I said earlier, and it really goes nowhere. To the north is the park. To the south is the bay. So that opening is strictly for U-turns. But by closing it, it gives us a much greater flexibility with our plant material. When it's open, we have to keep the plant material low for quite a distance on either side of it, and that restricts us to just a few plants. By closing the median opening, we can then use our full palette and the oak clusters, as you can see in the dark green in this What will our landscape enhancements provide? Well, one thing they certainly provide is aesthetics, including the framing of views with the sand live oaks to the bay in certain strategic locations. The landscape enhancement provides low maintenance after establishment. There's no turf in this plan. There's limited pruning. Once the plants fill in nicely, there will be little opportunity for weeds to get a foothold, and there will be little need for replenishing mulch because there won't be a lot of exposed area between the plants. And finally, low water usage. These are plants that are not used to a lot of water. They don't like a lot of water. They actually perform better once established if they don't have a lot of water. So after we get them established, which will take six months to a year, the irrigation system, and there is an irrigation system, can be cut way back or turned off completely. And with that, if anybody has any questions?
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Townsend? Thank you, Mr. President. Does any of these plants bloom?
The muli grass does flower. The rest of the plants do not.
Okay.
I noticed at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned included in the grant was the maintenance. Somewhere, I recall Monday, that I thought when I read the background about it, that to receive the grant, that the city was required to do the maintenance of this area.
Yes, sir. After the first year, the maintenance is included for the first year.
Okay, of the grant, and then after that, the city will be required.
That's correct.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Wood and Mr. Dewise.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First of all, congratulations on what's been done up to this point because it looks absolutely wonderful down there. I remember the first time I drove down there, I thought I was in the wrong place for a minute because the contrast, the sewer plant in rubbles on the right to the beauty of what's been done there is absolutely stunning. My question is, is the median that you'd like to close up, is that straight beside us here that we're talking about, the road running right by the building here?
No, that's out adjacent to Admiral Mason Park. There's one median opening. No, that's out adjacent to Admiral Mason Park. There's one median opening. Yeah, near the Missing Children's Memorial, just to the west of the Missing Children's Memorial.
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to request an electronic copy, and if possible, a printed copy of this, and I look forward to seeing it installed. Thank you.
Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. I think many of us are still elated or in a state of elation after seeing the transformation of Main Street, and I'm excited about the continuation of the transformation. Most importantly, I think for many people, they have been somewhat confused about where do they turn to change this sort of Speedway aesthetic? How do we, how do we create a sense of arrival for our city that is something grander and more exciting than just, again, a Speedway? And this will go a long way in reducing, I think, that thoroughfare sort of context by dividing that wide abyss of basically featureless landscaping or non-landscaping. So I'm just very excited about it.
Thank you. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to say thank you for the presentation. It was, it was nice to see it in full color and see exactly what you're aiming for. And I just wanted to remind the council, we've been talking about our goal setting and reviewing our previous goals, that landscaping like this was one of our goals, to try to work towards low maintenance, low water usage things. And, you know, sometimes it takes a while for us to start the ball rolling, but I hope that this will help us see how we can start doing this kind of landscaping in other places to reduce the, just the impact of most of the things we do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Myers.
Yes, I am very impressed with the presentation and the selection of the plants. And I would like to see us continue to beautify the rest of the city and the rest of our gateways and using these types of plants and aesthetics, not just for the southern gateway, but northern, eastern, western, and especially the airport area. I think first impressions are very important. And while we're on that subject, when I come across the bridge from Gulf Breeze, one of the first things that catches my eye are those blue plastic garbage cans over in Wayside Park. And while we're putting beautiful plants in, can we possibly address the issue of putting some aesthetic garbage cans and also, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much. The garbage, I'll address that real quick, because we did have those garbage cans at Baby Park. We were able to get some more attractive ones, so I would support that also. Sir, I was wondering the start and finish of this project. When do you anticipate things go well here tonight? When will you start and when will you finish this project?
Councilman Johnson, we'll be releasing a contract to executive tomorrow with the objective of having this project done by June, end of June.
Okay, because we've got fireworks and et cetera that we need to pay attention to. And I hate to have this, this project undergoing completion when that, when that's going on. Also, you know, I like the fact, it sounds like we're going to have, not have to water it so much, and pesticides and fertilizers will not be as required for the, for this type of vegetation. Is that correct?
That is correct. These are all native plants, and if they get established well, they should require minimum maintenance.
Okay. You know, I continue to talk about pesticides and fertilizers and how it affects our waterways, and any efforts in regard of reducing those pesticides and fertilizers, I would encourage this council to support. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald's.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank Dr. Pratt for her comments as it relates to the Strategic Planning Day that we have set forth, because it tells me that she's now looking at those strategic plans, and I want to make sure, and I'll take advantage of every opportunity I get. It makes me feel good to know that, that I can state that Mayor Hayward is actually carrying out the plans that we'd set forth in 2009. So those people who have arrived at Pensacola recently and believe that these are new ideas, these were ideas that we had as a council, and they are being put forth. And that's the purpose of getting together and reviewing the strategic plans that had been set forth, is make sure that we delineate our role as a legislative body versus the mayor's role as the person who's responsible for the operation, the day-to-day operation of the City of Pensacola, as well as moving the City of Pensacola forward. So for those of you who think that we may not be working in unison or working together, if you attend the Strategic Planning Day that we have set forth, you will see that indeed, we are working together. It may be of an invisible nature, but in fact, it, it, things are working out, and hopefully, the city will continue to get better and better. But the strategic plans are very important to our movements, both as a council and as for Ashton Hayward as our mayor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Garza, regarding the project you and I met on yesterday, I like these plants here, so if you keep those in mind. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, thanks for both of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds.
Nothing further, Mr. President, but I just will let council know, I just forwarded to all of you the electronic copy of this presentation.
Presentation, okay. Thank you. Council Communications. Mr. Weiss and Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like I'm speaking every time we have something new come up, so I apologize. I think I'm done after this. I just wanted to make council aware of the information I've put in front of you tonight, the National Complete Streets Coalition, Complete Streets Workshop, that I said I would research and get more information on. There is an email at the bottom of that, Ms. Linda Tracy, that you can email with questions. She does have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday office days, if you wanted to speak with her directly at that phone number. But this is the basis for getting a community effort together for talking about complete streets policy. And I also had asked Ms. Major to send you just the link of the newsletter about two weeks ago, so you could start getting that information and understand just how revolutionary this is around the country. There's so many municipalities, either cities or even counties, that are passing new policy for complete streets to make sure that all users are considered when we're doing any improvements, and that legislation on this level, on the granular level, changes what FDOT will do or changes what plans on a federal level will do. So we can change our future simply by putting this in place. So I look forward to, I know Dr. Pratt has been working very hard on trying to craft some policy guidelines, a framework, and I hope that this will be part of our strategic planning session on May 30th and that we can move forward with that at that time. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Myers.
Yes, I just have a couple of things. First, I want to thank Councilwoman DeWise for providing us with this information. As you know, I've been an advocate for complete street adoption of ordinance and policies here at the city council. I read in the, in a newspaper the other day that the little town of Fairhope, Alabama, is the first city in Alabama to adopt a complete street policy and ordinance, and they're actually implementing it, and I understand that Councilwoman DeWise has been over there and actually seen some of the implementation of their ordinance. So I think it would just be great for us to develop a complete street policy and ordinances if necessary. I wanted to also announce that a restaurant called, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's on the corner of, it's next to Publix, Jordan Cafe.
Jordan Valley Cafe, Jordan Valley.
Pardon?
Jordan Valley.
Jordan Valley, yes. Thank you. They have a restaurant down here on Palafax, I believe, and they have, will be opening, a restaurant there on Ninth Avenue, just right there at the Publix parking lot. And they have great food. They had a ribbon cutting the other day, which I attended. And so I encourage people to check that restaurant out. The food is very good. I wanted to bring up an issue, I don't know if Mr. Garza is here or not, but I don't want to put him on the spot. But I wanted to bring this up tonight, because a number of people in, around the Sander Street area have asked me why the sidewalks that are being put in on Sander Street from Langley to Creighton are being installed by the county. However, one block on that street is in the city limits. The sidewalks have been completed. The Roads Inc. was out today putting, putting out sod. And we just cannot have a street with one block without a sidewalk. And I'm wondering, for the benefit of the public and council, if Mr. Reynolds, you might have some information on what the city intends to do with that block. I don't, I don't want the citizens to think that the city is just going to leave them, that one block without a sidewalk.
Thank you.
Well, before Mr. Reynolds answers, I do want to point out that that one block is still in the county, and the county opted not to put the sidewalk there. But anyway, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Garza and I actually had a conversation, I guess it was an email conversation, about this when it came out in the newspaper. But we're certainly looking at that and if necessary, and if it is our property. This is the first I've heard that it was, was actually the county. But if it is the city, we will make sure that we have sidewalks there.
Okay. Did that take care of you, Ms. Myers?
Well, yes, I, I'm surprised that you said that it was in the county, because I was under the impression that that one block is in the city limits.
Well, which all of, 100% of Pensacola is in the county.
Okay, but that's true, but this one block happens to be within the city limit boundaries. Their garbage cans are black, so I guess that makes them in the city limits.
Yes, no, no argument. No arguing with you there. Just saying that the county could have sprung for another block.
But I, I think Mr. Garza is working with the county to solve this problem, and I just don't want the citizens to think that the city is not doing anything. The city is doing something to, and has, has been actually working with the county on that. And there's just some detail that needs to be worked out, and I just want the citizens to know that the city is not going to leave that block without a sidewalk. I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Myers. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, and I think I've been talking too much also. But in any event, I just want to make, mention to the citizens that the streets that are being uprooted by, on the west side by ECUA, they are doing a project, and they will not be left like that. So just bear with those streets, like on EF down in the southern part of the city, government, intentional maintenance, all over that they are doing some work on some corroded pipes or something of that nature, but they will in fact come back and straighten up those streets. The other thing of note, I think, is the recent victory that Bubba Watson had at the Masters Golf Tournament. Now, you might wonder why I mentioned that. Bubba has been very helpful in supporting a lot of the activities in Northwest Florida, even though he has moved to Arizona. He's from Baghdad. But the First Tee gets a tremendous amount of support from Bubba Watson, all of the professional golfers that are located in this area. The Diva Derby Tournament, which is a tournament for youngsters, he supports that and paid an exceptional amount of money for that. So I think I applaud him for his victory. It's just another example of the tremendous athletes that we do have coming, coming from this area. And when you see him, I would think that we need to say thank you, Bubba, for all you do, for our kids coming up in First Tee, Diva Derby, and all of the support that he's giving to various other activities from Baghdad to Milton on down.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Dr. Pratt, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Gerald's.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to follow up with Councilwoman DeWise's paper she gave out to us, and I think that this is a great resource that should be tapped. I think we sort of got a little off track with some of the complete streets things, partially working through our processes. And I know that the attorney has the sort of faux ordinance I gave to take shots at. If we do want to consider it again, I think that could be pulled up again pretty easily. So if that's the council's interest, we could probably convince them to put it on. Second item is, wanted to send congratulations to Scenic Heights. This Saturday, they're going to have a ribbon cutting for their very first Scenic Heights signs. The neighborhood association's been existence for a little over two years, and they've gotten very energetic, and they're going to have a big ribbon cutting event and a ribbon cutting for the new disc golf course in Hitzman Park. It's not, it's not going to compete with First Tee, but it's another good thing to do. I don't know that we have professional disc golf that people can go to be the masters, but it'll be a good thing for people, and it'll be a great day on Saturday. And I have to share condolences that I'm obligated with my other job to not be able to be there. But I hope that they have a wonderful time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, and ditto to, congratulations to Bubba Watson. You know, we've had some great athletes coming out of this area. Bubba Watson, Trent Richardson, won the national championship here in January, and last year, we recognized Josh Sittin', so a lot, lot of great athletes out of this area, and I just want to recognize them again. The other thing I think we should mention is that we recently had the Blue Wahoos played here across the street, and we had five sold-out games. I'd heard many things from the community about parking issues, about bringing Main Street down to two lanes. Many, many of these issues that were of concern of certain individuals in our community. And from what I can tell, things went off pretty smoothly. We had, again, five sold-out games, over 5,000 people at, at our stadium here across the street. And I just think things went real, real smooth, and I want to thank everyone that helped with that effort. I want to congratulate the Wahoos on winning the, most of those games, not all of them. And I hear they're struggling a little bit mobile, but hopefully, they'll come back and get to their winning ways. The other thing I think that's noteworthy is that Monday night, we had an event at Singer Theater, had two shows, one at seven and one at 9:30. It was a comedian named Tosh, and it was sold out. So we had, in Pensacola, downtown Pensacola, I think it's, we should recognize that we had over 3,000 people visit our Singer Theater, about 3,500 people visit our Singer Theater with the two shows Monday night. And just right down the street, blocks from the Singer Theater, we had a sold-out baseball game of 5,000 people. So collectively there, we had almost 9,000 people in downtown Pensacola. And what I'm hearing from our merchants and all, there was, you know, a lot, a lot of folks, a lot of excitement, a lot of money spent in our downtown area. I had a restaurant person tell me that it was a big, big night for them Monday night. So, you know, I just want to thank everyone, and I'm real encouraged with this, this, this type of stuff. I mean, it just seems like we're headed in the right direction, and, and I just wanted to think it was noteworthy to mention that both those things. But to have two sold-out events in Pensacola on Monday night, I think, I think is pretty impressive. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Gerald's.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll debrief this evening. The first thing I want to mention is the fact that the disparity study is moving along slowly. However, we're not getting the level of, the level of participation that we had anticipated. And a part of it, as told, that it may be because of fear of retaliation. But I want to encourage the audience and to know that Mr. Reggie Smith takes additional caution in making sure that your comments or the information that you share with them, not with me, but with them, is held in strictest confidence. So if anyone is having a problem... So if anyone is having a problem that they need to discuss and try to find a solution, now would be the time, simply because without sufficient information, evidence, whether good or bad, it'll be difficult to make a good decision or to make good recommendations. Excuse me. So I will encourage people that there will be a couple of more meetings between now and the time that the report comes out. But I would encourage citizens, if they've had a problem, if they have something they'd have liked to share with Mr. Reggie Smith of MGT, to please don't hesitate to participate in those meetings so that we will have a better picture of what's been going on in the city of Pensacola, thereby giving them the opportunity to better evaluate what has happened and make appropriate recommendations. My last comment involves, and I'm not one of those people who will sit around and wait for someone else to ring my bell, I'll ring it myself. And I want to make sure that you folks know that you're sitting among an individual who recently received a distinguished alumni award from the University of West Florida. That means you're in good company when you're sitting with me. And of 76,000 graduates of the University of Florida, West Florida thus far, and they remembered me, I feel quite honored. I was there for a brief period, I did what I was supposed to do, graduated and was out of there within a reasonable amount of time. It's important because, and I shared this story with the the audience at the banquet, the dinner, that when in 1963, when I heard about the fact that a four-year university would be coming to Pensacola, I was in the 11th grade when we received that information. But at the same time, we were told that we would not be able to attend that university, that we would still have to go to leave home to to get a four-year degree or a master's degree. And at that time, I was saddened by the follow-up information due to the segregated rules of education in the state of Florida, not just in Escambia, but in the state of Florida. And it makes me feel really good that I defied the thinking and the actions of those days by coming back to Pensacola, attending that university, and graduating with a master's in ed. leadership. And I just wanted you folks to know that, that I was quite honored. And those of you who did not know, you now know, because I'll ring the bell myself. I'm that kind of guy. I'm not waiting for anybody to ring my bell. I'll ring it. Because if I wait for y'all to ring it, it may not get rung. So I'll ring my own bell when necessary. Now, I have been told not to brag or to gloat or this or that, but I'm a bell ringer. I'll ring the bell for whatever's going on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and thank you, and congratulations, sir. Mr. Spencer, Ms. Myers, and Dr. Wu.
Thank you. Today, I received a phone call from a constituent in District Six regarding a code enforcement issue, and I drove out to look at the subject property. What that request led to is something I hope that we will all be able to benefit from, and that is the eventual coordination of code violations and the basically the listing of those with the help of code enforcement, working perhaps under the direction of our city administrator and working with MIS. My wish is that we, as council members, may be able to have readily available and accessible information regarding code violations in our district while we can certainly go through the process of contacting our code enforcement officers. They're busy, they're often out on the streets. But ideally, we will, my hope is, that we'll be able to see on a regular basis what list of new code violations may exist. And that will allow us to be not only proactive but informed and armed when we hear from perhaps those that receive the code violation, and they would understandably, most of the time, be upset when they contact us. We'll have more information and be prepared to have a discussion with them. And also, it allows us to tell our constituents what I learned, for instance, today is that the old East Hill neighborhood area just recently had a sweep of that provided 17 notifications or code violations. So that's sort of fresh off the press, hot off the press, and certainly, I know that it will require some administration and coordination with MIS inspections. And our city administrator, Mr. Reynolds, may want to comment on that. But that's what I wanted to share with you.
Well, thank you, sir. Ms. Myers?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate Councilman Gerald. And also for telling us about your accomplishment and award, but also reminding us about history, too. And so I just wanted to thank you for sharing that information with us.
Thank you. Dr. Wu?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Councilman Gerald will not be the only one ringing his bell. I'd like to chime in as well and congratulate him on his well-deserved order, award, as a former professor that was privileged enough to have him in several classes. I can also attest that it was well-deserved and well-earned. Congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Madam Clerk, are there any petitions?
No, sir.
Okay. Next up is our consent agenda. These are items that passed unanimously this past Monday at the Committee of the Whole, and we have several items here. Appointment, General Pension Board. Item B, Special Magistrate. C, Law Enforcement Trust Fund purchases. D, Resolution supporting Florida Emerald Coast Clean Cities Coalition. E, Resolution supporting Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grant Application. F, Change Order Number One, Hewitt Street Reconstruction and Stormwater Enhancement Project. Item G, Word of Contract, Bid Number 12-012-FY2012 Street Rehabilitation Project. H, Word of Contract, Bid Number 12-022-Bayfront Parkway Median Landscaping Project. And Item I, Request to Rename Woodland Heights Park to William E. McNeely Senior Park. I ask for approval of all items. I will be holding Number I. We have two members of the audience that wish to speak to that.
Move the approval.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Now, like I said, we'll be voting on items A through H. Any comments? Please vote. And those pass unanimously. And on the request to rename Woodland Heights Park to William E. McNeely Senior Park, first speaker is Mr. Walter Wallace. And following him will be Reverend Hugh King.
Good evening, Councilmen. My name is Walter Wallace, I'm president of the Woodland Heights Neighborhood Association, also a member of the Council Neighborhood, President of Pensacola. First off, I want to thank you for your speedy action on this. I think the last time I was here, I think we spoke and I told you, this is a project that we've been talking about here since November. And to piggyback on Councilman Gerald, we congratulate you. Also, I'm a firm believer, like my grandma, my aunt always said, give me my flowers while I can smell it. Unfortunately, what we're asking you to do tonight is to rename the Woodland Heights Park to the Reverend William E. McNeely Senior Park. Unfortunately, he would not be able to know that. So over the future, that we may be to give everybody their flowers and where they do, while they can smell them. But Reverend McNeely, I think the last time I gave y'all a little boxer here, but as you know, he served as pastor of Beth AME Church at 511 Woodland Drive, across the street from the park, for 34 years. He was a pastor in the AME Church for over 54 years. But I read the boxer, but one thing that always remind me of Reverend McNeely is that in 1996, when we started, me and some of our neighbors thought about forming the Woodland Heights Neighborhood Association, at the time, Councilman, our Councilman was Reedy Jones. But we got together and we went to Reverend McNeely for his support, and it was automatic because he felt that his church and in the individual he were, to make sure that the neighborhood grow, that he had to be a part of it. And he opened up his church to us, he opened up his advice to us all the time, constantly supporting our neighborhoods, our neighborhood and our neighborhood association. And one thing always stuck with me, that he told me one time, he said, if we, you take care, we build this neighborhood up, and the next neighborhood across the street, they build their neighborhood up, and the next one build his neighborhood up, he said, you step back, you got a beautiful city. So I asked you today, tonight, your number three, and the rename the Woodland Heights Park to the Reverend, Reverend William E. McNeely Park. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, sir. Reverend King.
I can defer to after the vote.
Oh, until after the vote. Okay, be fine. Please vote. Okay, thank you. Reverend King, that passes unanimously.
Mr. President, have Mrs. McNeely here, the family just wants to express appreciation of the coming out.
I was told to be the spokesperson for the McNeely family tonight. This is Mrs. Annette McNeely. This is in the absence of Ronald McNeely and his family, who live in Memphis, Tennessee, Darlene, Christian Lauren, and Matthew. And this is Mrs. Alicia McNeely King, Reverend McNeely's daughter, and our children, Hugh Junior and Sean Wee. Just want to say, first of all, thank God for the life and legacy of William E. McNeely Senior. I want to thank Mr. Walter Wallace, the Woodland Heights Neighborhood Association, and the council for approving this. This is a very noble and kind gesture, means a great deal to the family.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeWes?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I did just want to congratulate the family and tell you, my first experience with naming of a park was Miss Peeden, a park over off of Creighton Road and Ninth. And I didn't know Mr. McNeely, Reverend McNeely, but I do know the mark that someone can leave on people's lives, and being in one community and caring for others around you. And I'm just proud that we're able to do this tonight, and I hope he's looking down and proud as well.
Okay, you have at least one more. Mr. Gerald?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, and I recognize Mr. Lee and the president of the Woodland Heights Neighborhood Association, Mr. Walter Wallace. I cannot think, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Mr. Wallace for his continued efforts at the Woodland Heights Park, which is located in District Five. And when this idea came before council, it was almost what some people would call a no-brainer in that we knew the right thing to do. And I thank council for its cooperation and participation in this effort, and congratulations to the McNeely family. It was well-deserved.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. I have to agree with Councilman Gerald in terms of his description, a no-brainer. I did a lot of activity with Reverend McNeely, even though I'm Catholic. I had a tremendous relationship with him, especially in the community, as the equal opportunity officer for the Naval Air Station. I had tremendous amount of dealings with him in trying to assist in identifying individuals for jobs, upper mobility, and those kinds of things. And every time that I would call and ask for his assistance at the Naval Air Station or the Chief of Naval Education and Training, he did not say no. He would come and assist and give me advice. And so I'm really pleased and proud that I had an opportunity to be a part of this well-deserved. Thanks so much.
Mrs. McNeely and Reverend King and your family, thank you. We have two items under our committee report. These are items that did not pass unanimously at the Monday Committee of the Whole meeting. The first one is the Maritime Park Commemorative Plaque, that city council members' names be included on the commemorative plaque at the Vince Webb Senior Community Maritime Park. Motion passed six to two. Councilmembers Hall and Spencer dissenting, and Councilmember Johnson absent for the vote.
Move the approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. After reflecting back on on this issue Monday at the Committee of the Whole meeting, I still can't figure out the mystery as to why we needed to discuss names on this particular plaque. I guess it's just the nature of the beast that we're part of. I went around and looked at some various memorial flags within the city, and significant flags of outstanding completions of projects that that we have achieved. And it reflected that of the city council members of that time, parish members, et cetera, who were actively involved in making a determination and decisions about about the project. I remember Monday's meeting and where the name of the city manager, Al Colby, the previous city manager, came up and it appeared that it just flew over our head, and no one made mention of it. But I guarantee you, that park would not be over there for the efforts and the activity of Al Colby. Numerous hours, all night, preparing reports for the council to make a decision. And you can feel somewhat 97% assured that when Al brought it to you, he had done a complete warranty on the project, felt real comfortable in accepting whatever recommendation that Al brought forth. Some of them I didn't agree with, but I know that he had done the best that he could regarding that. So with that being said, I would like to make an amendment to this motion in terms of including Mr. Colby's name as city manager on that plaque.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to amend. I've got two, I've got two lights on, and I may ask you to turn them back on. I clear the lights right now because I just want people speaking to the amendment itself. Okay. Dr. Pratt, then Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I agree wholeheartedly, though I hope that there's a friendly amendment to also include Mr. Bonfield, who was, I think you just said, Mr. Colby, but Mr. Bonfield was also involved. And I just wanted to explain briefly the piece of paper in front of you. I I had intended, and when I started working on the document that we saw on Monday, to include those two gentlemen. And I was half photoshopping sort of crazy, and I just, I got too swamped and I forgot to double-check. But the document in front of you, I got a call from Mr. Ed Spears this week, saying that he had prepared a mock-up, and I spoke with him, and I said, you know, somehow we didn't quite decide on the Bonfield-Coby question. And he said, oh, I already put it in there based on the conversation. And so the the document he I, he gave to me to give to you, there are two versions, a sideways and a vertical. But that was sort of what he was thinking we were going to approve tonight to become the plaque, and that does include that. And so I do hope the amendment passes.
Yes, and so I'd like to include Mr. Bonfield because, in actual other, he was the city manager when we actually started. And if we're talking about preferences, I would like to deal with this top one here and not this one.
Well, and it's interesting that if you go back and look at some of the pre-discussions before the public announcement on the Maritime Park, it was kind of Mr. Bonfield that directed the efforts to happen there. The the plans had been, was trying to secure one of the sites up, I think it was the Escambia Treating Site. It had been the the original choice and was looking for city support on being able to use that, and he redirected it down here. So Dr. Wu and then Mr. DeWes.
I thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ditto everything Councilwoman Pratt has. I'd like to, um, ditto everything Councilwoman Pratt has just said, and everything, Councilman Townsend. There's a article in the Florida Independent by Rick Altson, talks about the park, and it starts off about the two main principals meeting with Tom Bonfield. And, uh, it had, he not been in that capacity, uh, he's the one that brought it to me and the other council members. So, uh, I'm very pleased to see his name as well as Al Colby's name included, and I too favored the very first top sheet. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, Ms. Myers, uh, excuse me, Mr. Wees and Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure there's the two different na, uh, dates on these versions with Pensacola City Council, two thousand four to two thousand twelve, and the one that is vertical is two thousand five to two thousand twelve. So I just didn't know if that was an error or, or why, but that it be one or the other, whichever we choose. I think that it originally said two thousand four because of the term of that council.
Yeah, but I don't think that original vote was taken until the, what, those that were elected in oh-four were seated in, in oh-five.
Right. So one version says one and one says the other, so whatever Mr. Spears intended when he sent it over, I just wanted to make sure that he knew.
Well, I, I'd just like for it to make sure that it's clear. I know the final decision, I guess, comes from CMPA on, on this, but I, I would support the oh-five version of it. Okay. Ms. Myers?
Yes, and I, I just wanted to state that I, I do support adding, uh, the name of, uh, the names of Mr. Bonfield and Mr. Colby, and also that I prefer the top sheet, I think is a lot easier to read and look, looks better from my perspective.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Wu?
No, sorry.
Okay. Um, I will be supporting the, the amendment. I've still got to make up my mind on the main, main motion, but I will be supporting the amendment. There's no other comments? Uh, please vote. Okay. That passes unanimously. Now we're back to the main motion as, as amended. Any comments on that? Okay? And none from the public? Seeing none? Please vote.
Mr. Gerald.
Mr. Gerald. Okay. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is renaming of Exchange Park. That city council rename Exchange Park the Mike Disorbo Park, subject to further information from Exchange Clubs of Florida. That motion passed five-two. Councilmembers Myers and Spencer dissenting, and councilmembers Hall and Johnson absent for the vote.
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Discussion. Okay. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Wees?
Yes, I, thank you, Mr. President. I would just very quickly like to state, and, and hopes that we can still keep this a secret and surprise. Mr. Disorbo does not know this is even happening, um, and we haven't finalized when it would be presented, so if any members of the press could just leave that out of the news for now, um, and as well as if we see Mr. Disorbo certainly smile big, but mom is the word right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I know, but good job.
Uh, report, uh, of the Community Redevelopment Agency, sir. We had a fairly lively CRA meeting, didn't we?
I will not have a lively report, Mr. President.
Okay.
All right. Our Community Redevelopment Agency met on April ninth. All board members were present. We approved the March fifth CRA Board Meeting minutes. That motion to approve the minutes as submitted passed unanimously. We also had an, an item regarding a request for payment of an invoice to Mr. Barry Abramson and Associates. We had, um, a letter produced by him with backup material. The CRA unanimously voted to deny that request for payment. And in addition to those items that we voted on, the Community Redevelopment Agency had a brief presentation, an update by Brian Hooper, Chairman of the Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee. We also wished Mr. Brian Hooper a happy birthday and congratulated him for being a father of a three-day-old baby. We all then concluded with a presentation by Mr. Matt Altier, UWF and Executive Vice President, I believe, who provided for us a, um, an overview of a, the concept of cultural heritage tourism. That concludes my unlively report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Ordinances on the first reading. Item fourteen A, please.
Item fourteen A is proposed ordinance number zero-eight dash one-two, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan and future land use map of the city of Pensacola, Florida, repealing clause providing an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments? Please vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Johnson is absent for the vote. Item fourteen B.
Item fourteen B is proposed ordinance number zero-nine dash one-two, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain property pursuant to and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of Pensacola, amending the zoning map of the city of Pensacola, repealing clause and effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments? Please vote.
Dr. Wu, please. Dr. Wu?
That passes unanimously. Mr. Johnson is absent for the vote. Item fifteen, uh, ordinances on the second reading, item fifteen A.
Item fifteen A is proposed ordinance number zero-six dash one-two, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending section twelve dash two dash seventy-eight of the Code of the City of Pensacola, Florida, amending conditional use regulations, providing for severability, repealing clause providing an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I have one person who wants to speak on this, Mr. Michael Caro.
Members of the city council, I appreciate the time to speak today. Um, I was absent at the last meeting, so I apologize for that, but if you did have any questions, uh, that's what I really came to answer. Um, I was also going to share, um, some of the boards that we have that were passed in the Planning Board meeting, um, at the, uh, Planning Board, if you had any questions about what we are proposing to do.
Mr. Townsend?
Is it going to look like this?
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, I objected, I, I voted no last time. If you had these here, you probably, you wouldn't have got voted no. Looks good.
I appreciate that, and, uh, you know, we have engaged, um, you know, obviously, uh, Architect Brian Spencer and Horton Landscapes out of Destin. Um, we actually have actual architectural renderings. It's, it's, this is not, sometimes my understanding is you'll, you'll see pretty pictures, but that's not how it is, because the architectural renderings do not support those pictures. These are actually architecturally designed and completed, and so, um, once we, we also purchased the Trader John's building that is being renovated right now, and so when that building is complete and leased up, that's when we can start this project. Uh, obviously, the, the land development code will not allow us to, uh, to do this without the, the restaurant taking place.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have to say that I agree with Mr. Townsend on this, in that it unclutters the sidewalk and allows pedestrians the opportunity to walk freely, but this is a nice rendition of what's to come. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Appreciate it.
There's no other discussion or comments? Please vote.
Oops, Epstein, sorry.
Okay. Please vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay, that passes seven to one with Mr. Spencer Epstein. Okay, thank you. Item fifteen B.
Item fifteen B is proposed ordinance number zero-seven dash one-two, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance closing, abandoning, and vacating a portion of an easement reserved within the Bayou Boulevard right-of-way in Pensacola, Scambia County, State of Florida, previously vacated by ordinance number eleven dash zero-two, recorded at OR Book four-eight-eight-four, page four-five-five, repealing clause and providing an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, resolutions, we've got five of them. Item sixteen A.
Item sixteen A is a resolution zero-nine dash one-two, to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and making revisions and appropriations for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand twelve, providing for an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Please vote. Sixteen B.
Item sixteen B is resolution number ten dash one-two, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pensacola, Florida, affirming its support of the mission and goals of the Florida Emerald Coast Clean Cities Coalition.
Move the approval.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Discussion. Please vote. Passes unanimously. Sixteen C.
Item sixteen C is resolution number eleven dash one-two, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution of the City of Pensacola, supporting the twenty-twelve HUD Choice Neighborhoods grant application by the Area Housing Commission.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Please vote.
Mr. Gerald.
And that passes unanimously. Sixteen D.
Item sixteen D is resolution number twelve dash twelve, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and making revisions and appropriations for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand twelve, providing for an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments? Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And finally, sixteen E.
Item sixteen E is resolution number thirteen dash one-two, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and making revisions and appropriations for the fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand twelve, providing for an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Under unfinished business, um, I know the clerk's not used to, um, doing this, but I'm going to ask her to, um, give us a little, little history that goes back at least to February, um, with us on, uh, the mayor wanting to appoint a designee to represent him on TAC. That's Tourism Advisory Something Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on February sixth, there was an item on your agenda to discuss the TAC appointment. As a courtesy to the mayor, to Mayor Hayward, council appointed him to the committee. It was brought to your attention that he wanted to appoint a designee to attend in his absence. Um, to date, there has not been any decision or action from council regarding that appointment, if you would allow him to appoint a designee, or if that would come back to you, and that's been since February of this year.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Wees?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to share the historical information from last year when I was sitting as president and the decisions that were made and brought forward to council for, to council to make a decision as a whole. And when we did the assignments to different, uh, boards and such, this was a mayoral seat, but that was when mayor was part of council. And I do recall some members of council being quite upset that that was being suggested. Um, so I, I expressed my concern at, at that point in February that a designee of the mayor would not be acceptable when truly this was something that council should be sending one of its members to. Um, and it was a courtesy given to the mayor that, uh, he be attending the TAC meetings. Um, so I do not support a designee and would actually like a member of council to be considered for that seat.
Okay. Ms. Myers?
I do not support sending a designee either, and I agree that a member of council should be appointed to attend those, that meeting, those meetings, or be a part of it.
Okay. Well, let's, uh, let's put, let's put something together in the form of a motion, and, uh, I'm to move.
Do you want to make it?
And I, I'm not expressing a preference one way or the other on this, but, um, you know, is, we, we probably need to have a motion here.
Well, um, I'll make a motion that we appoint a member of council.
To be a member of the TAC. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then there's a second. Dr. Pratt and Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I hope that that included that we would have nominees next time and, and vote on it on the next agenda. Is that the, sort of the intent there?
If, if it passes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I won't be supporting the motion tonight. I have no problem letting the mayor designate someone to serve on this, uh, this particular board, so I will not be supporting motion tonight. Thank you.
And I, I join you in that, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Townsend?
Can you tell me what committee we're talking about?
Tourism Advisory. Convention.
Tourism Administration Convention Committee.
Well, I have a little issue with voting on it right now, but I actually don't recall how it was in the past. I, I think the city clerk read, were we, uh, were we nominating someone that we had representation on it, or that the mayor, was the mayor?
Well, the memo goes back to February sixth of this, of this year, and it was a request from the mayor then, um, to allow a designee, um, to, to be appointed by him in his, in his place, and we didn't take any action on, on that. And so the, the issue has, um, come up again, and so, that satisfy you? Okay. You come, I mean, and if, if we, if, if it's a big concern to you, I guess we could vote to put this off till, to the, to the next meeting. But it's been out there for a while.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. Mr. Spencer, then Dr. Pratt.
I have, I have the confidence in the mayor's position, and it doesn't have anything to do with the personality of the current mayor, but, and I will not support this motion because I feel that that position, um, should have and exercise the authority to make this appointment.
Okay. Dr. Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanted to respond a little to Councilman Townsend's question that sort of set the stage a little bit, is that, um, there are few committees out there still that, that are governed by some other legislation, or that group has had historically requested the mayor to be the person. But with the new charter, the charter did not give that authority to the mayor to have people on committees. It gave that to the council, and though we have confidence in the mayor, that's not what the charter gave, the power the charter gave him, and that, that is the underlying question here, I think, is in, in the, in that situation, when the, the mayor, not, the name mayor is on some document, is it, does it, where does the charter fall on that question? And so should it be something that we, we try to conform more with the charter or with some other system? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wu?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, this is one of those issues I'm really confused and puzzled. Uh, and I would like to, before we take actions, seek a legal opinion on how to proceed, because it's breaking down, it, to some degree, for or against, and I want to vote basically the way I should vote. Um, so, and I think we all feel that, and so I'd like to get a legal opinion on which body has the right to determine this position, then I'm ready from that point to proceed on. Am I making any sense?
Yeah, you, absolutely, sir. And, um, the attorney has not turned on his light to respond, but, uh, Mr. Reynolds wishes to speak. Oh, yeah, Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. That's exactly where I'm coming from, what, uh, Councilman Wu, uh, I'm having an issue as to, am I violating the charter if I vote for the mayor to be on it, as, as been implied here? Uh, because I want to- here? Because I want to follow the charter, because that's what dictates our course of action, in my opinion. So, you raised a question as to whether we should go back and look at it to ensure that we are not violating, since it appears to me some kind of different opinion. I personally don't have any problem with the mayor serving, but I want to ensure that what we do is follow the intent and the context of the charter. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's important to understand, first of all, that the mayor is currently the appointee. What we are talking about here is, in those times when the mayor is not available, who will it be that will represent the mayor as this body's already appointed individual? And I just wanted to make sure that we're being very clear in that regard. We're not talking about the mayor not being the appointee. That has already occurred.
Okay, good. Thank, yeah, thank you. Mr. Dewey?
Yes, I just wanted to offer further clarification on this. When I sat down with the mayor and had discussion on some of the things that we would be doing to begin to transition to the new form of government, and had the discussion about this particular one, and had not considered, from the perspective of council, the issue that may arise. And when this came to council, we had a lengthy discussion on it, and some council members were upset that this was not a council seat. So, possibly, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment here, because it is actually, as I understand it, council sending the mayor, appointing the mayor to do this, and not something that has become the mayor's decision. So, I'd like to offer an amendment that we appoint a member of council as an alternate to the mayor. When the mayor cannot attend, a member of council will attend, because I'm not sure of the last several meetings since he has been appointed, if he's been able to attend them at all.
No, he has not.
So, he's very busy, so maybe that will solve this problem. So, my friendly amendment is that the motion that Ms. Myers has made, but to add that it would be the alternate to the mayor when he cannot attend.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Please clear the lights. So, the only thing that we can discuss now is the amendment from Ms. Dewey. Mr. Spencer?
Okay, I just want to have clarification, and so, what seems inconsistent with me is that then, the, well, I prefer that the mayor, knowing that there will be inevitable absence, there will be some times he cannot attend. So, in those times, I feel that the mayor would want to appoint that person that will be basically sitting in the seat that he would otherwise be in, as opposed to council making that appointment.
Okay. Mr. Gerald?
Well, for a minute, I thought it was about to be cleared up, but let me ask this question. Foolish me. Let me ask this question. Does this committee require an elected official to be present, as they do with the TDC, the PEDC, and others? Is there a requirement that an elected official participate with that group?
Do you know the answer to that, Madam Clerk?
I'm not sure, but I can find out for you.
Okay.
Because if that's the case, then I think the amendment, and understanding the mayor's availability from time to time, that he may or may not, then, of course, I was going where Ms. Dewey was headed, in terms of an alternate person to fill that void, but at the same time, if we're having difficulty deciding who's going to do it, I would also like to, if possible, if the amendment passes, or if we come back to it, to do it on a rotating basis, since it doesn't appear that anyone else is going to be consistently available, that it is rotated through council members by numbers all the way down to the at-large seats. And that would fill it whenever, you know, you'll know when your term rolls around. But versus what we're trying to do, and I think Mr. Reynolds for clearing it up, at the fact that the mayor is already there, and it's apparent that he's not been able to attend, but to, it's 7:27, rather than go through this all night. Mr. Pratt has the first, best idea, to do it through nominations, but now that we've talked about it a little bit, I don't think we need to make a decision this evening, but to consider where we are right now, and then when we come back next committee of the whole, then we'll be prepared to make a decision. If it's been missed all this time, I don't think it'll shut down. If it's missed again, between now and the time we've had a chance to consider what direction we need to go in. Right now, I don't hear, I feel a state of unreadiness.
Yeah, I sense that too, so I just asked whoever made the motion, perhaps withdraw that, and we'll take care of it at the next committee of the whole meeting. Yeah, there's three people that still want to talk to it, but I would just urge us to wait till our next committee of the whole meeting before we actually take the vote. Ms. Myers?
Yes, I would like to amend the motion to.
Well, we can't amend again, because we've got an amendment before us, which is the only thing we can talk to right now, so.
Well, I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, so you had the main motion, then, and you've withdrawn that. Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Myers. Since that's withdrawn, Mr. Johnson, Dr. Wu, do you need to speak?
Ah, yes.
Okay, Dr. Wu.
I go back to my original statement. The question seems to be the conundrum, and I don't mean to put the attorney on the spot or ask for a ruling today, but it, under the new charter, I believe from what Councilman Pratt said, the council has responsibility to do committee appointments. If that is true, then whoever serves as the alternate seems like to me would also come from the council. If that's not the case, if that's not the intent of the charter, we need to know that as well, and in that case, the mayor will make the appointment. But I think one way or the other, we're still going through this growing pains. This is just something we need clarification on, in my opinion. Thank you.
One of the things I'd like for you to think between now and the next committee of the whole, is allow the mayor to make the appointment and to have it affirmed by the city council. It's just a thought on my part, but as it is now, I support the mayor having his own designee. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I do too. I just don't think it's a big deal. I haven't heard any red flags. We've got an attorney here, city administrator, we've got, you know, professionals here, and I just don't think that this is a huge deal. And if the mayor can't attend, he's already the appointee, and if he's going to designate someone to, in his absence, I just, I don't see what, you know, the big deal here. So, I'll just wait, and maybe we can have this before the next committee of the whole, but I just really don't see the big deal of him appointing a designee to attend these if he can't. I just, I'm somehow not getting it, but I guess maybe it's going back to the charter and what the charter states, so maybe we'll hear that in full next COW. Thank you.
Okay. We don't have a motion before us, we, but I've still got two people that want to speak, and if there's no objection from council, it'll be Ms. Myers and Mr. Gerald.
Well, between now and the committee of the whole, if it has to be an elected official who attends that meeting, then really the issue is moot, in terms of the mayor sending a substitute, unless that person is an elected official. And so, anyway, that's all I have to say. I mean, we can get a legal opinion, I suppose, from our attorney on that.
Well, I'm sure that's at the top of his list between now and then. Mr. Gerald?
Yes, and I will be brief on this, but I think that once the motion had been withdrawn, and I want to mention that Councilmember Dewey reminded us frequently on process. And since we're not, we don't understand, or we don't know what we're supposed to do, let us stop this right now and allow information to come forth, and we know what the procedure is, and then with the process that we follow will be appropriate. But the opinions that are flying around now, they're moot, they're dead. The motion has been withdrawn, and I would suggest if there's no more unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. Thank you, Mr. President.
New business. Say none? Open forum. Ms. Myers?
I just wanted to know if anyone, I was going to ask that council invite to Mr. Alter, is it Alter, who gave the presentation to the CRA, to give his presentation to the city council. So, since he's already given the presentation to the CRA, and we've all heard it, I guess there would be no interest in inviting him to give it to the city council, but I just wanted to bring that up, just in case, you know, if anybody's interested.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer?
The posting of Monday's CRA meeting, as well as the committee of the whole meeting, is already available for full video review of that presentation.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I don't have any cards from the public wishing to speak, so if there's nothing else from council, we're adjourned.